Okay, we can go ahead and get started. Evelyn, can we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Marcus.
Here.
Trustee Weekly. Trustee McAvoy is absent. Vice President Wells.
Here.
President Lawson.
Here. All right, welcome everybody to the final board meeting of the 2324 school year. I'm going to forego my welcome spiel because the handful of audience members have already heard it a few times. So do we have any changes to the agenda?
I'll move to approve. Can we? Okay, I'll move to approve the agenda.
Thank you.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Great. We do not have any oral communication, I believe, Evelyn. No speakers cards. That brings us to bond consent items. Do we have a motion to approve?
I will make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Wonderful.
Thank you, guys. Have a great summer.
Oh, thanks, Will. Okay. That brings us, we have no action items. So discussion item, what is this? Eight point one, discussion on local indicator measurements for the California dashboard.
Okay, good evening. Today, we're going to be going over our local indicators, something we have to do every year with the LCAP. So today's, we are, Jenny prepared this presentation. She is on vacation. So as you know, we have our accountability system that we use in California, which measures all of our testing data. But our local indicators are things that we do onsite here at the school. And so all the information we're sharing about local indicators is a server that Jenny sent out to our families and to our teachers to help us know where we are at in terms of our local indicators. So as you know, we are, you guys have seen the dashboard, all of our local indicators, this is a dashboard that shows us our performance as a district. And of course, we address these issues, these indicators in our LCAP. So this is what drives our LCAP. As you know, our dashboard provides everyone the information as to how we are performing at schools and as a district. It provides a quick overview overall about our student groups and our target groups. So it uses different measures of success for our students. But for our local indicators, we look at our dashboard and then, and under our dashboard, this is how we're measured. So there's the six state indicators that are on the dashboard, which are academics, the chronic absenteeism, English learners and suspension rate is really what the areas that we address as a K eight school district. Then they have the college and graduation rates. For our local indicators, we look at basic conditions. We look at parent engagement, our implementation of standards, school climate and our access to a broad course of study. So there's these 11 indicators overall that are measured. And so tonight, we will be looking at our five local indicators. And so these local indicators, we have to make sure we update these each year. We look at where we are at in terms of did we meet them? So we put met, not met, if we haven't met them for two or more years. We have to then address them, but so far, we've been doing really well in the last couple of years. Part of our place in the local interest, we have to do a local report, which is what we're doing tonight with the LCAP. And then we have to then upload it into the dashboard in the next month. And so again, Jenny did all of the survey in the spring. So our first priority is just our basic services in which we met. So this is just our Williams Act, our Williams settlements and looking at where we are at in terms of our school sites and complaints and our deficiencies throughout our academic year. We look at our teacher assignments, we're monitoring Williams audit. All of these things are things that we look at in terms of curriculum facilities and good repair. So we have met that standard. Our state priority two, which is the implementation of state academic standards, we have, again, we've met our overall. Again, this is a measurement of our progress on our academic standards. So we have to do a self-reflection tool in which we looked at our district credential survey, teacher service. We had 49 teachers who responded to that survey. So there was a range of teachers, you guys had the links, of the range of teachers that went from one, probably teachers who were very beginning teachers who needed more support to, we had before overall in that data. So as we go through our priority standards, there's again, information that is part of the teacher surveys as well as those surveys that were linked. We're looking at our academic standards and our professional development. As you know, we've done a lot of professional development this year. So it doesn't surprise me that a lot of our PD is on ELA and ELD, right? That's where we're at. So we're looking at where we are in initial implementation in ELD because we had that new curriculum. And when then we look at our mathematics, so the two areas in which we are beginning, we need to work on our next generation science and social studies standards, which are areas in which we still need to improve upon. And academic and for academic standards for instructional materials, again, we've met this standard. So when we look at our overall rating, again, no surprise that our instructional materials focus has been on ELA and ELD and then the mathematics, the three areas that we focused on this year. And again, we have a lower rating of a three on next generation and history and social science standards. For implementation of these standards in terms of policies and programs, again, there is a range and threes and fours in all of these areas with ELA Common Core standards being the four. So we have, you know, here, it's kind of interesting that this is where full implementation, our full implementation for next generation science standards and history, social science are a little different in the policies and programs. So I maybe on the way the question is formed for teachers. The implementation of academic standards and other adopted academic standards, we've also met. Again, we have our CTE, Career Technical Education, which usually is in the middle schools. Our STEAM education in terms of the middle school. But we also have them in the primary grades as well. We have our STEAM teachers. So a two is there in beginning of development. So again, depending on where we are in terms of our parents' understanding and teachers. Under health education, we're a three, physical education, a three, visual and performing arts, a three. And then world languages is a two. So these are areas. And again, we don't provide too many world language. We have Mandarin and we have Spanish. Those are our two languages, right? So those are areas of focus. In terms of priority two is the implementation of academic standards and our support for teachers and administrators. So again, this is another standard we've met. So it's looking at our professional learning needs of our groups and teachers as staff as a whole. So we've provided quite a number of PD and support for our teachers this year, which are three. And looking at their individual needs, we're at a two for teachers. This is an area we want to focus on a lot more next year. And then providing support for teachers on the standards that they have not yet mastered. So that's a three. And the parent involvement and family engagement, overall, we have met, although we know this is an area we want to address next year as well. We really want to look at our program, how we're seeking more input from our parents in our decision making. So it's one of our goals. We really want to make sure we're promoting more parental participation in different programs. So in our family survey, we had 337 for this indicator. But we did have more in our family, Panorama Family Survey, which is 1,500. So in our state priority three with parent engagement, this is our overall rating in terms of building relationships between school staff and families on the survey that was sent out and which we met. Again, just looking at the numbers, we're at full implementation for number one and three and four. And then we have a four, full invitation where we're creating welcoming environment. So that's great to hear that we are creating some environments that are very welcoming to families. And continuing with state priority three in terms of parent engagement through our panorama survey. This is information you've seen. So building the relationships between the school staff and families, again, we've met, but we are at 15% favorably for how often do our parents meet with teachers at the school site? So again, it's an area which we need to address. And how involved have we been in fundraising efforts at your child's site? So if there is fundraising happening, that's about 21% again of who, of our population who answered. So you can see here, just the number of almost never, once, twice. Again, this is part of building that school religion, but this comes from panorama survey.
Real quick, does that, does that cover all the grades? Or they, they, they're not split?
Yeah. Well, it has, it's split up in, yeah, by the family ones, it's not split.
Yeah. So when I'm looking at this, I think about how involved I was, like how often I met with my, my kids' teachers in kindergarten, first, second grade versus like middle school.
Yeah.
I don't meet with them. And I think that's okay. I had conferences and we did like back to school night and open house, but otherwise I don't schedule meetings with them.
Yeah, that was, that was gonna be my question. For a bunch of these different metrics, like larger is better, right? And we want to go up into the right, but trying to set an implicit target that all of our families meet with their students, teachers weekly or more, I could imagine it's a nightmare maybe for some teachers. And so maybe, maybe this one's got a little bit more nuance in terms of like, well, almost never is probably not ideal. And so we want to minimize what's in that category. But maybe once or twice a year is okay. And in terms of fundraising, similarly, it's like, it's probably unreasonable that 100% would be extremely involved. Like, I mean, that'd be fascinating, but it's like, is there, is there a target that we can set based on looking at surrounding districts of what, what a healthy engagement looks like? How we differ from that healthy engagement and then what our plan is to get healthy?
This is exactly what we were talking and we were meeting about today, David, about we're really, I think the one thing, and I was actually going in our meeting today, looking at our parent, the survey questions, which to me are like, this is the question, how often do you meet with your teacher? Like, these are two of the four questions you're asked. None of them really tell us how often they participate, because participation looks different, right? So we were just talking about that. The panorama survey really doesn't lend itself for us to really get a good gauge of our parent participation because their, their questions are very limited. So this is something we're looking into, how do we change this so that we actually gather more about participation and what does participation look like? Because these questions really only give us a very snip, you know, snippet while I went, I attended my parent conference. But some parents do, we do see parents onsite, we do see them involved, but in a different way. Doesn't talk about, did you go on a field trip? Did you volunteer? None of these questions address that. And yet we have parents who participate in those areas.
Right. I mean, like I'd imagine it's like, are you interested in volunteering but have been unable to?
Correct.
Right? Like, whoa, we'd want to go and chase that down. Like, let's make it easier to get fingerprinted, show that you don't have tuberculosis, et cetera.
Unfortunately, panorama doesn't let you do that. And I, we talked about changing some of the questions that we're asking, but do we?
We are, we are looking into possibly not doing panorama.
Yeah.
Just so you guys know, I'm researching it now because.
Yeah, it's just, what's the point in asking people to take these surveys when they're not necessarily helpful?
All right. So we've been looking at the California Healthy Kids survey as well, just so you guys know. The thing with the California Healthy Kids, it doesn't disaggregate the information like we may need, but we're going to try to figure that out. So when Katrina returns, we're hoping to contact with California Healthy Kids and see what we can do because they do also have a family engagement survey. And I actually seen the student one, which is a lot more friendlier and easier for students to actually answer questions to. So we're trying to really look, because it's just the framing of the questions, that this is really hard. Unfortunately, the panorama is very limited. So we are looking into that. So now I'm working on that. But again, this is what we have for our parent engagement. So in terms of separate, just looking at our building partnership for student outcomes, you know, we looking at what we have done this year and really supporting teachers and principals, really to think about school self-capacity. So you know, we're, we're at initial implementation. We know we need to do more for parent participation. We are very aware of it. And that's one of our goals next year as well, is how do we build our school, our parent partnerships? And how do we get parents more involved? And so these are areas, you know, initial implementation makes sense. So these are areas that we need to work on that we know. Be great to have a four. And then seeking input for decision making. Again, this is always, this has been an area of concern of how do we bring more parents involved into our school site councils, our ELAC, where decisions are being made as well as to this arena? How do we get our parents more involved here? So again, we're really working out, trying to figure out a plan of action and we met today and starting to work on that plan over the summer so that we can have something different for next year. In school climate, again, this is priority six. We have just, you know, we have to administer our climate survey, which is what we do every year. We've been doing it twice a year, but we are looking at changing that. And then through our climate survey, again, this is not new information, but it does give you a little snippet of those questions. How positive or negative is the energy of the school? How often do you worry about violence at your school? Again, you know, these are the questions that come from the climate survey. So you can see that, you know, the percentage is there and then you can see the responses. But we did meet all of our things in first middle school, again, the same questions, positive. It depends on the day, you know, I've had a good day, had great energy that day, right? So again, you know, there's a variety there of what you see. So we're hoping to change these. And then in terms of broad course of study, again, these are what we provide our students. And then we also met this standard in which we just have to annually progress, show our measurements of progression in our, in our coursework and what we're doing. So Wendy plays close attention with what we're doing, our courses with our middle school teams, making sure we are on top of especially middle school electives. Right? Because we do want to have them have a variety of things that we want to provide our students. So looking at everything that we're doing and reviewing the schedules. And we're doing that again next year. Power school attendance, we're looking at all of these things that we're doing to really make sure we're providing our students with the needs, meeting their needs. And then again, this is our broadcast of study with middle school, just all of our coursework, making sure we have all of this for our students in which we do. Of course, there's always areas that we can improve. Okay, so any questions or on any of these?
Thank you, Ellen. Any comments or questions? Go ahead.
Let me think. One of the things that came out when we were previously reviewing like some of the panorama data about how students feel about the school environment that I thought was interesting about panorama, I think this is generally like, we're, we're pretty down on it for totally fair reasons. But one of the things that I thought was helpful was percentiles, right? So it's like, what things are bad, but are just kind of like universally bad and what things are maybe look bad, but actually are good and then vice versa, right? And one of the sections of that that popped out at me was just middle school, just how our middle schoolers are doing. It seems like they're doing much worse than our K to five. And some of that is to be expected. Middle school's hard, developmentally, a lot is going on. I had an awful middle school experience. But, but it seems that like our middle schools unusually bad in terms of the experiences that the kids are having going through it. And so that makes me wonder if it's possible to, you know, put, put together like a task force with some of the students, some of the parents, some of the teachers, and try and get to the bottom of like, what is it that is going on that is causing these students to have, like, not feel super welcome at school and not have a great school experience? And then what concrete things are we planning on doing about it, on what time horizons and owned by what people, right? So I'd love to see that on, on some sort of time basis, because like, I feel like we've been seeing it consistently now year over year that our middle, middle schoolers are having a pretty bad time. And I'd love to see if we can address that.
That's a good, I'm actually thinking about, we have our student voice piece. It's what we do with our next steps with our student voice and how do we, you know, take that further and making sure all, all our staff members are aware of what our students are actually asking for and then putting action to it. So I totally agree that we need to do something with that. Thank you.
So just the comment, obviously, when we talk about middle schools, I'll tell you, from my three children, I never heard any violence happening. I'm sure it was happening. I just never heard it. And then my kids never came home and said, like, somebody got in a fight or something happened, right? So I wonder too, like, everybody has their opinions, of course, too, but like, where some people actually think of violence, is it because maybe our parents are there at the school site? Obviously more involved because maybe they're doing, I don't know, art in action or something and they see and hear things. So that would just be my, I guess I'm just wondering like how that is measured by the parents, because again, even with three kids at all different years, and I personally never heard anything. I know it happens, but while they were there, my kids never came home to see something happen at school.
So on that, I think it's interesting because it depends on how the person answering the survey interprets that question. Because the first time I read it through, I think I'm worrying about violence, I'm worrying about whether or not there's a school shooter, not that there might be a fight on campus. So I wonder if people are answering that way, too. If they worry just in general about school safety because of everything we hear in the news, I don't know if that's how they were answering it, they, they don't get to explain what they're thinking.
And I wonder if it would be elevated if there had been a recent incident somewhere in the United States of a school violence, right? Because that elevates everyone's needs. I wonder if that would also elevate. So who knows? I mean, I hear you. My son's in high school and I would hear there, there are fights here, but nothing major that he would be like, I'm concerned about this. So I understand what you're saying. It depends on the interpretation of people and whatever it had been experienced, maybe they had at that moment or what they saw on the last couple of weeks, right?
Thanks for the presentation. I understand that the standard is about doing the measurement. And so clearly that's on that, but I appreciate that you also included some of what was measured and how that outcome came and so we could have that discussion.
Yeah, thank you so much. And thank Jenny for putting the slides together.
Thank you.
The other thing that we need to think about, and David did bring it up about, you know, middle school and how people have different thoughts about middle school. And it's really interesting because you will take parents or I'll meet with parents and I met with one over the week. I ran into one over the weekend, let's put it that way. And they were totally surprised about the middle school that their child had gone to. They had heard A, B, and C, you know, how people hear. And they said, you, you recall a couple of years, she said, just go visit, talk to the principal. We did that. Our kid is doing great and loves it. And we're sorry, we're going to have just one more year at this middle school. And then we go to high school and they're really worried about high school. They're really worried about high school. I said, well, thank you for, you know, bringing that to my attention and that you remembered that we met and I asked you go. So I think, you know, there are different thoughts that are out there. And what we need to do as a district and also as schools is really highlight the wonderful things that are happening at those school sites. Because these parents were thinking of going to private school. And I said, go meet with the principal, spend a day, spend a day there. And I called the principal and told him this is probably going to happen. So welcome them and they did. And they said, there are a lot of kids, but, and they still had some hesitancy, but they did it. And that's the best thing they did. And they said, thank you for saving us all this money. But now that we're worried about the high school, I'm going to go, I go, well, that's a different ballgame. I said, I, you can talk to some of our board members who have high school kids in high school, so, but I can't help you with that arena. So it's, you know, it's that balancing act. The other piece is that we're looking at, and Anna did allude to it when we were meeting today. And yes, there's the healthy kids, but Anna was also doing some research on other districts and other districts are not even doing the panorama survey. They've created their own. So do we go in that manner and have like the Gardner Center help us create the survey? Something where we're going to get information that's going to be information that can we really grab on to and create next steps? So that's a possibility also. I thought we had to take something that was nationally known and Anna said, no, you don't.
I thought we did too.
And so that could have changed, that could have changed since the beginning.
Yeah, of course.
So that's the only thing that's in there. So as long as we make sure we're gathering our suburbs somehow to segregate.
I think the Gardner Center would be an excellent idea.
We met with them today.
Helpful information, right?
Yeah.
So we want to be gathering data that's actionable. If we have a long survey, only a very small fraction of our population will fill it out. And then it's, it's not going to be a representative sample. It's going to be a bathtub curve of either the people who have an axe to grind or the people who are delighted and happy to spend the extra time.
You should have seen how long it was when we first started doing panorama.
So I, I think short and sweet surveys tend to be good because they give you the large end. It gives you the statistical resolving power and lets you see really a nice cross section of the community. But then it means that you've got to be really disciplined, like you only have a few bullets, like you, you better pick really good questions that are really going to guide you and that the, the district is going to take meaningful action depending on what our results are there. And then we'll be able to hold ourselves accountable for making forward progress on those things year after year, right? And so that, that should be the, the goal of what we land on.
Right.
Thank you. So moving on to consent. Consent items.
Do we have a motion? Make a motion to approve the consent items?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Thank you. Item 10.1, adoption of resolution number 12, approval of ed code options for teaching assignments for the 2425 school year.
Well, thanks, Anna, for that introduction earlier. This is brought for you tonight for consideration. To, this is an annual request. Usually for teachers that are wanting to teach electives, but in some cases, for master scheduling needs core subjects. And so the list of that's presented here tonight are teachers that are fully credentialed with years of experience that might teach one extra class in a certain subject area. Are there any questions?
No, I see a lot of fantastic teachers on the list then. No questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, it looks regular. I moved to approve.
Seconded.
Is in there?
Hi.
Thank you. 10.2, adoption of resolution number 13. Calling for an election.
This is.
I wouldn't need to like say no to this.
It's just, it's like, can you please pass this off?
I do want to put it on the agenda. That was my, it's like, do I have to do this? Do I really have to do?
It's just something we have to do.
Pro forma, all right.
So for those in the audience, it's to call for an election for the three seats that are up for this and travel and heard this year. And that's trustee area one, three, and four, I believe.
Yes.
I move that we do the thing that legally we have to do.
There a second? Second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Yeah.
10.3, adoption of resolution number 14, the education protection account for fiscal year 2425.
Good evening. Resolution 14 is another requirement that allocates, excuse me, education protection account money from the basic state aid that we receive on an annual basis for 2425, it is estimated to be $1,192,598, which will be put towards in full teacher salaries, all 1.1 million dollars.
Yep, any questions?
Yeah, the only question I'd ask was where on the website it gets put, because I saw that that was in there and Mick said it's on the, it will be on the district budget page after we approve it and we'll try and find the, get the old ones on it. With that, I'll make a motion to approve. Seconded.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Let's see, that was 10.3. So 10.4, approval of local interagency agreement to provide education and training to credential candidates.
So we have approximately 20 universities that we work with to provide a student teaching or internship experience for teachers, sometimes for counselors and other types of positions. And ever so often, they, they don't have a, their expiration dates vary. So tonight, we have two contracts that are about to expire. And we actually don't have anyone that are filling these interns, but should we hire someone over the summer or next year? We have them ready to go and we don't need to come back last minute. So this is a proactive approach. And since those dates roll, they will come to incrementally as, as they're up and coming and expiring.
Are there things that we can and should be doing? Do you advertise in these intern openings that we're about to create?
So these are for universities that want to place student teachers in our schools. And so in order, so we do actually advertise with them about our openings and job vacancies. But what's nice about this relationship is we get to pair them with a mentor and they get to work with us and see if they meet, choose and love our CSD and vice versa, which is a win-win. And sometimes they do need to have a secondary setting in the, in the spring, let's say, because it's one semester with us and one semester with someone else. But they're on our list and we reach out and we actually send them our job vacancies when the time is right. Any other additional questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
I move we approve to have the possibility of having interns.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Ten point five, approval of Redwood City Administration Association Compensation Proposal.
Any questions on this topic?
Uh, the duated motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve ten point five. I thank you, the administrators want to say thank you.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Hi, hi.
Uh, let's see, ten point six, approval of the LCAP.
So before we go, I just want to make, um, going into, I hope you guys.
Oh, sorry, thank you. Um, just before we, uh, uh, just want to make a, we went into and we were trying to fine tune our goals. Um, and so in terms of suspensions, we just added a zero point five for our district overall each year. And then specifically, we went down and looked at our African American, so we just reduced it by one percent. Cause we know, we hope we would always have a zero percent in all of them, but really trying to reduce it. So we just changed the language and the numbers on goal one. I just want to say that. And then in go three, we also just, um. Rewrote it a little bit, just saying that all our CSD students will increase at least four percent annually in the LA and math and the I-ready. Our district local assessment program. And then that was the other part, say the same. So we sort of just fine tuned that one, um, to make sure it was a little bit clearer. Okay, so we're asking that the board approve our local, um, account, uh, LCAP for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year tonight.
Any comments?
And then just, just to clarify on like all three, it's because we wanted, that four percent is about the number of students that are meeting their annual growth target. Um, I, I get.
We want to increase that.
Yeah, because every time I meet it, I think that we're trying to have them increase their score four percent. As if we're measuring like they, wait seventy, you know, seventy points on a hundred point scale, they should go up by, you know, three points this year and, you know, three the next. Um, but it's a number of students and that's kind of what the metrics reflect, okay?
Yeah, it's the overall, yeah.
Uh, we had a vigorous discussion about this last week, so, um, you know, I, I, I don't. I don't have anything more to discuss for that, um, if anyone else did, but, uh, uh, otherwise I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you.
And ten point seven, approval of the twenty-four, twenty-five proposed budget.
We're presenting the twenty-four, twenty-five, uh, fiscal year budget for Redwood City School District. Uh, there were no, uh, material changes from the budget presented at the public count.
Thank you. If there's no questions or comments, we can, the motion to approve.
I will make a motion to approve ten point seven.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Brings us to board reports. Since last Thursday.
I, I have nothing to report since last Thursday.
Sorry.
Um, I attended a Redwood City twenty twenty along with Alyssa and Dr. Baker. We had a really nice retreat with all the partners.
Um, we had a two by two by two meeting with, uh, the city council and, uh, the high school district. Um, just give updates from the different jurisdictions. And the city manager handed out, um, their projected general fund net operating position for. Um, it looks like it's ten years out. There's a lot of red. Um, and so on the other side is some, um. Without new revenues, possible areas that they might consider cutting. So, um, they're looking at ways to increase their revenues. Anything else from that meeting?
Uh, the, the tax that's gonna go on the businesses, possibly.
Possibly. The, the city is discussing updating their business tax license, I think is what it's called. Um, it's a pretty antiquated system they have right now. And there's a lot of other cities that are revamping theirs too. So there may be, um, something on the ballot in November to change the way they do that. Um, what's interesting is, as a voter, I would be voting to approve or not. Um, new revenue for the city that doesn't affect me personally coming out of my pocket. So it's one interesting way to look at it.
Yeah.
Um, I think they'll know by the end of.
By the end of.
July, I think, whether or not there's gonna be something on that ballot. Um, otherwise, do you have any other reports?
No, because I was at both of these, yep.
Okay. Um. Let's see, twelve point one, contract update information credit card summary. Are there any questions?
I actually review these things and I, I flag when I find weirdness and then just didn't find anything weird.
Thank you.
That's good.
Um. Correspondence. I received a PRA request today that I forwarded to Dr. Baker.
And Wendy has it, so they're going to, she'll take care of it. There's, she already has, because we get these all the time. And she already has a spreadsheet and everything, it's just.
Perfect. Thank you.
We just had one la- last week, right? Yeah.
Anything else? It's been quiet, school's out. Possible other business suggested items for future agenda. Um, no changes to the board meeting calendar. This is our last meeting and that brings us to adjournment. Do we have them?
I move we adjourn.
Thank you, is there a second?
I will second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Great. Have a wonderful July and we'll be back August seven. Is it seventh or sixth? August seventh, we'll be back.
Great. You should bang the gavel. Thus ends the year.